I call meeting to order, please stand for pledge of the fire. Pledge of the fire. Ready to go. First on the agenda is the West Hampton Beach Fire District Board Code Signs. We're having a frequent discussion. Lou was kind enough to come last meeting and uh open up the discussion on the fire department signs. Our village attorney reviewed some of the presentation and is working on a potential code change.
Well, it's a it's a memo that I gave you one.
Yes.
So Steve has one.
Yes.
This one only way and Rob's got one.
Rob, Rob has one as well. You want to share it with.
Bring. You have you don't. Here's one. And um. That's yours. And what we didn't, we didn't draft codes, we raised questions. Um like example. The, the way it was provo- proposed by the district was that it would be automatic, they didn't need a permit for it. They would just, they would just go and brag and get them. I guess a bunch of them turned them enough. Uh but one of the things we asked for you is you want to make it a special exception so you can review it before it goes up and see what it's going to look like. Before it's approved and whether that should be with the village board of trustees or the planning. So you could make it a special exception, that's the first thing, a special permit. And it would have to be exempt, obviously, from the provisions in current and the signed code that prohibit it internally lit and animated, internally lit signs and animated signs. The next issue that I raised was the definition. And there's, the emergency service facility is in your existing table of use organization, table of uses, but it's not a defined term. It's just in there. In other words, if you go to the definition section, it doesn't have a definition for it. And so what we proposed generally is that we, if you want to limit it to emergency services facilities and you want to pass a code provision as requested, you'd have to go back to the definition section and define emergency service facility. The current, there's a current provision for community service provider, but that's very general. It would open it up in a whole bunch of different.
Right.
And I think the fire department and we agree pretty much that would be emergency services only.
Does the CEO already identify us as emergency services and pointing our exact location? Do we have a CEO for the building for emergency use?
It's a minor, the point is it's, it would have to be defined in the code if we.
Correct.
If we exempt, if we. If we, if we, if we adopt the provision that gives you the right to uh get a, gives an emergency service provider the right to make an application or get it approved, we have to define emergency services provider, which is not defined.
Which this is, this is a good definition. Okay. This is what you want.
And there's. I mean, I think. We raised the issue of uh, obviously it's going to be non-commercial. I think you said B one, B two, we don't confirm that, seems like a reasonable limitation. You want to limit it to a ground sign or a wall sign or have either or, that's another question.
Consider a wall sign, a magic boost to a ground sign, is that narrow?
Wall sign is just vague, you know, it doesn't make any statements. The statement is, the sign is more or less a monument for the front of the building. Big building, big sign. And for the facility that we're working with, it's easier to have a sign that is two-sided, where you can be seen from both sides. I think it's just, you know, it's a nicer presentation.
Well, the discussion was the readability of the sign, if you're.
Readability is better.
If you're. Different opinion, if you're driving by and looking at a wall sign, if you see if it's further away, do you see it better? Or if it's right close to the road, there's not a lot of space between the building and the road.
There's more public aware- awareness when it's closer to the road. You know that when you pass by, you can easily see it versus looking fully.
And I had to turn, I think we agreed last meeting that having a particular to the road is ideal rather than parallel. So those kinds of things.
That's, we're just speaking about options, that's all.
And then the, the next is the size of sign. Current limitations are twelve square feet can be one and I think it's twenty-five square feet in other districts. Uh they want a um, the district wants a thirty-two square foot sign. I think that they're, I think the sign that they, that you guys, the CBA with, I took this memo, I don't, I didn't do the numbers. It's just a little over thirty-one square feet. And then. You want to have a limitation on other signs as well, if you've got one of these signs, in other words, can you limit the total number of signs on a property? I think what I'm saying, you know, do you want to have, the standard is no more than two principal signs.
I mean, we've been accepting for the psycho, but they're thinking of our psycho. Online people.
And I don't think they need three, I don't think they need seven.
When we were, you know, the conversation I had previously with Mayor Moore was the utilizing the east quogs, which in their case, they have east quog fire department on the building. We probably could go with or without having West Hampton Beach Fire above the electronic part of the sign. Where in east quog, they do say east quog fire, duplicating that. I don't, not sure if that's an issue on our end, probably not.
Don't hurt the same song.
I think the simpler we keep it the better.
Right.
Easily.
Right.
And uh the um, the current code requires setbacks of forty feet from the street line and ten foot for a property line where the district. Seating. And then um. The, the question that, that we thought about um, discuss rhetoric and other things, but one of the things I think that's my mind until just recently is the power of illumination, you know.
Right, right, there's a good.
Should there be any limit on? I don't know.
Do you have a particular?
Because I think as you increase pixel power, more pixels per, we use the example of sand in the glass, the more focus that you have, I think the intensity of the brightness is actually not as bright. So if you're trying to pronounce clarity of a crappy sign, if you would, um I think you have to enhance the brightness. Whereas a more clear sign like an iPhone, cameras have gotten much better, better that they are, you can literally see in lower light. So I'm going to go with, I'm not sure if that is an issue as well. You know, I think whatever.
No, we're just trying to get a parameter, we have, we're trying to get ideas.
Parking, you put in lights, certain, sort of lumens and stuff.
Right.
This projects.
Correct.
Could be very, very bright, it's right in the middle of the village, you know, it's in a very prominent location. I don't know what it is, but it's just an issue that came to mind, maybe something they want to get involved.
It's something we gotta, maybe look, we gotta work on.
Blaring into the eyes of drivers so that they can, you know, see the road, it's like they can have bright lights, approaching cars have the bright lights on, that's not adjustable.
I can't, no.
Can't be down, no.
I don't think.
Just.
I'm sure of it. So they probably have that being making a light of. I don't know, the, you know, I have to look at it again.
That I also pitched, for that was the first picture that we have, was that the one that they've submitted?
Um, I don't know.
And then there's a whole bunch of others, essentially. The bases, you know, that base. That would be beneficial. Bases we usually don't count, you know, for monuments, there's an overall height. The sign is rectangle where the image is. Whereas the base could just, I would, I would recommend leaving the base out of it like you normally do, but if we're going, if the village is going to review it, then you could have, say.
Discussion.
With base you'd like to see or not.
Back to Steve's question, so I think the brightness is not necessarily brightness, but it has to do with pitch and distance. So depending on the distance you're viewing would measure your intensity of the quality of the pitch that you buy. So I mean, in my guess, I think we're buying, you know, a top quality pitch, which would be a minimum viewing distance of uh, well, even. So the high quality would be seen as far back as forty-three feet. So, you know, again, that on the setback, uh you know, again, not speaking for the entire work commissioners, I think we'd be in middle ground on that if we had to negotiate the distance of the road. Uh only, we don't have a lot of setback, now I will like to add to uh this, so in the absence of two of our firefighters, I believe, F M Y, um, uh Mr. Jordan. Andrew Jordan. F M Y was in nine eleven, and then firefighter day. We do have a piece of brass steel that we're going to try to operate into. So it's not going to be an obnoxious, overly done presence, we're just going to make a very simple presence. And the budget that we have for this sign, we're going to put a piece of nine eleven steel on the front lawn, it's a small piece of steel, it is authentic, there's a lot of effort to get it, we have it in the building. Um it's going to be placed on the lawn in, from the fire department, fire view, from the fire district uh point of view, we're going to place the steel uh right on the building, so we would have a little sitting area right on the front of the building. Uh like a safe place, somebody wants to come and sit and read or just think. Uh but we're not doing anything of, you know, overstructure or I think anything that the district, that the village would be in disappointment of us making this appearance of the steel. We haven't broadcasted it, only because we're going to incorporate the family. Uh Mr. Jordan was basically given somewhat in his honor, which was one of the things we have to, when we make the presence of the steel, we'll have our mission statement. Um and then a mention of these two firefighters from our area, so. The setback was to a certain degree to us, only because I wouldn't want to have the sign too close to the building, because where we have those upper trees for only to put a nice quality bench in the presence of the steel. The department, so once, you know, hoping that we can move forward as long as it might take, then the department will seek to its uh committee members to draw that diagram and then we can present it at that time. But you know, from my point of view, the position that I hold, I don't think any one of the commissioners in the business of doing anything outside of the box. You know, the district up west that have waterfalls and gas lights and burning torches, that is definitely not the direction that we're going. If it was close to the property, considering the light, distance and the shortness that we have to keep it, you know, I am expecting you not to have a seven foot. The initial application where I did go in, these are the exact sizes of that and the same setbacks. So if you were able to provide a special exception for the entire use of all of this, then of course the district, I think, would be in accordance to whatever you feel is appropriate. For the setback as well. Let me answer your question.
We want it closer to the road. I would say we're still working together and we'd like to.
Yes, absolutely.
On this, but uh there's still an awful lot to make apart. A lot of consideration, but I hope we're moving in the right direction. I think the other thing that came up in discussions in the other press date before is messaging, I don't know how we control the messages at all. As I think the fire commissioners and for the state department, group of people who agree completely with this for emergency services messages for fire department messaging, the least important messaging. Should not be used for uh virtual at all.
Oh, well, born small, see you all. Play the understood.
Things like that, but on the other hand, if you vote, if you're having a vote at the firehouse, go here, in anger, those kinds of things. So we have to rely that some might be in agreement, and I don't think, in talking to our attorney, we would have any enforcement at all at some level. I mean, you could have things in there, thank you, this person.
You know, that, that shows up on the signs, that would not be a urgency.
Right.
So thank you to this business because of the contribution.
Yeah, I know we can't, I can't promise you that, but I can promise you that.
Well, you could say, only for emergency or fire, you know, that create the emergency.
I guess what I'm, what I'm suggesting is if the commissioners, if the local state has a policy that they would follow or would like to have.
Gunshots.
That would, yeah.
I'm, I'm for sure. Fire. Watch Fire has a program that is basically plug and plug, you just edit it according to your needs, the manufacturing. Again, it's not, not the first time that anybody tried to assign it, but we're definitely going to be, you know, definitely accepting that, all of that.
And you mentioned the.
The. Any and all of those important things. One thing buzzwords going around the firehouse right now is close the door. There's a lot of training going on with the people who are sleeping with the kids, the doors are wide open and it's causing, you know, oxygenation, a fire and blowing up, you know, taking the whole house. Also, simple things like closing the door saves lives, it doesn't seem like you're saving a life when you close the door, you're shutting your child out, you're actually saving a kid's life potentially. Among many other reasons of trying to.
This new program around TV right now, possibly.
Just to point to the advertising, I think Steve might be a bit correct me wrong, um because they're politically, publicly funded political government, I don't think they can advertise using public funds, so. I think that would eliminate that concern right there.
Nothing else. Oh, this emergency happened here, voted votes here, because they do vote the voting, yes, like that, nothing else, nothing that's.
Right. Yeah, and you could, this is the type of sign that you can post, like you, you can't put political ads on, it's a governmental sign. Yeah, but you know, you could have non-emergency things, like the fire department wants to thank Matt.
Right.
For cleaning its uh, his guys cleaning this stuff, you know, is that appropriate? You wouldn't do a chip like that.
Yeah, right. I don't like that. Well, we have some of our food products, basically, they're freaking gorgeous.
Yeah. You know.
Sense about greatness.
Like, you know, don't like that, because we have to put that in the um, in the parameter.
And I admit I don't know.
Just don't go forward, it's just a matter of getting.
Oh, no, yeah.
It'll go forward, it's just a matter of getting everything is live.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate your attention and your patience. There's things that come in, oh, Sean, I'm sorry, Sean Johnson, that's long last name, was going to come in and talk to us about beach passes. I don't see him here. We did have, we did discuss things with uh Brian and Kim, who were going to be absent. And basically was like, because we're having budgetary issues, staffing, because of the minimum wage increase and we're going to have to increase what we've been paying, I think I talked to you about this, Ron. Yeah, sure, I talked to you about it. Last year we were paying about twelve fifty, the starting salary for a fourteen-year-old that worked there at the beach. Minimum wage has gone to sixteen. We do not have to pay minimum wage, but we do have to compete for the workforce, though. Basically, we're discussing. Possibility of raising wage to fifty an hour and up to fifteen. And as for all the seasonal employees, and it has a bigger lot kind of implications. Whereas the kids who were getting twelve fifty last year and some of the kids were getting fourteen dollars because they did with this a few years or were more mature or whatever and responded to it. So now we're bumping up the twelve fifty kids and for them, the other kids, we have a few days as well to keep the separation between the experience levels. Lifeguards, we're having trouble, this is everyone is having trouble, lifeguard, people are. The managers as well, because it's a higher, you know, old seasonal employees, so this will have an effect. On our, us who are seasonal employees and in light of that, we're contemplating changing our beach pass fees. One of the suggestions was to currently residents get two passes for free. Apparently the suggestion is to get one pass for free and charge for the second pass.
Well, you took a bit of car pass.
Car pass. Yeah, charge for the car pass. Non-resident fees, they are already paying, um I think the highest level is eight hundred something dollars for the season, raising that a hundred dollars. And that would be for uh books and things like that. So those are the kinds of things we're going to discuss with Sean and also discuss staffing, uh staffing numbers. Because we have a large number of students, fourteen and younger students, that are coming, or at the beach, we may be cut back on that, the number of those students. And we can't cut back on the number of lifeguards, we've already had discussions with the head lifeguard. It's just not a possibility for safety, they do watch, but those kinds of things are what, what are going to come up. Had uh Mr. Johnson been able to come, so uh.
He's probably waiting.
Probably wait this weekend. He said he was going to be here.
Yeah, probably forgot.
Because he said that before you went away for, but anyway. But that's, just so we're in, that's being considered at this point. And hopefully we'll have some discussion and come to a resolution in the March meeting so we can have things in place for this season.
Basically, what we're doing, this is what everybody, we've placed that blog.
Our cost of, my comment is that we have, it's down there, we're up twenty percent, so it's not. Unfair, as people are reaching their pockets, they're dropping more dollars than we have. They'll do beach, private, basically, private beach, you know, basically for the communities. I think it's unfair to ask for a couple of dollars.
They don't want to do it, we don't want to, we have to. It's just that it's, and the hot, the hot part is we can't get people on.
Younger generation, they're not wanting to.
We have a problem.
That's not, I see even if it was thousands. And you felt the position. Look at the deli, the little places downtown, you can't help one, the signs help one.
And the uh, the students that, that go away to college, they leave before the season is even complete.
Fuck this is always, if you ever look at the agenda, well, this is always, this quick meeting, this one's coming, we're hiring, going back and forth.
It gets you in meant to give feedback.
Well, I want to see Sean. This fucking days, though, he's not here, he's in Nicaragua, he's serving all the. All right.
Any further discussion that?
It's happening now, it's gonna get the, the final numbers. They don't come work, I mean, if we do without it, it's better. You have to cut back on stamp.
We should send out, can we send out a letter to the schools now, well, the schools, but after putting something else for children to come by.
Jump the reading. He's trying to get in the game to get all the kids signed up and all that stuff.
Right.
He's, he, that's a year. We have a proposal that, I would guess significantly used to be around eight thousand dollars, you know.
Yeah, so uh we stepped out for engineering help with our uh New York State BEC mandatory uh MS four plans, they help us. Submit our swamp bar. Call it, every year, um we don't have the staff and, you know, the engineering on staff ourselves, so the O B's been, been working for many, uh they do a good job. Uh the state uh supposed to update their MS four, which is the uh, it's really a stormwater collection management system. They try to update regulations every five years, they're behind on that, so this is, it's a major overhaul this year, uh we, we had to reapply for our MS four, as in every municipality did to the New York state. Just uh, it was just yesterday, actually, or, so. Normally every year this, this consulting fee is somewhere in the. Seven to nine thousand dollar range, we usually don't uh take advantage of all the services, so it's usually going to cost us five to six thousand. But this year, because they're redoing everything, there's some interim reporting, so there's more work. Consulting side, so uh the uh. Proposals, proposals, so now again, you see, there's check boxes there, typically, we don't take, there's training and. A lot of times I don't take those. I'm not taking on my training.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's probably a good opportunity for us to, since the state is restarting the whole program, basically. It's a good opportunity to just start at ground zero. I know Matt has some new guys, I have Nick that helps out with this stuff. So we might as well take advantage of the training this year, plus every, since all the processes are new. So I wanted to bring it all to your attention, that this fee is effectively doubled for sure. I, I don't know where it's gonna be next year, I would assume that, I would hope it'd be down a little bit, but I don't really know. And I don't think they know either, because the, the state is, and the process is changing. Going to thirteen. I, I, it's usually somewhere between five and six, but it's going to thirteen and change this year. So that's, that's a big increase overall.
Well, isn't that something we just put in, we definitely need to get started and help stuff together, something that's worth, why are you filming?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, and I, we do have big projects. In front subdivision, the Gables and West Hampton, Rogers, these are all maybe sort of projects. One, five acres of service, so it's, it's not like, we, we don't have anything.
Yeah, it'll be a group plan.
Don't wanna run afoul of the state. It's a good, it's a good opportunity just to, to raise, we will engage. Which was anticipated, um, we always try to teach the members to check in my office. But you should simply, effectively doubling, not appropriate, in terms of your attention. We could still cover it with permit fees, especially if projects never take longer.
So we'll put a resolution on the next meeting to accept that.
Thank you.
The next, uh, it's simply a formality right now. As Mr. Smith, you noticed, Chief of Police is not here, but we're doing this anyway. I think, um, it's a part of the PBA contract that the Board of Trustees has to, um. In effect, bona fide, the twelve-hour shift will be in effect for the next contract year at this point. Because at this point, they're making all of their scheduling and scheduling vacations. And all vacation takes and what kind of stuff that will be effective here. So with it, that in line, uh, at the March meeting, there'll be a resolution saying the twelve-hour shift will be continued for the next. Some, some year, the twelve-hour shift is not workable for some reason. We have the option, contractual, to go back to the eight-hour shifts. But at this point, we're gonna continue with the twelve-hour shift. So it's, it's just a matter of formality unless the board has a huge objection, I don't see that. It does have its obstacles, but it is what it is. The next item is, uh, we have been, uh, communicated. That the owner of ninety-five Bean Row would be, um, open to a proposal from us. To purchase the property, that's a property right next door to Rogers Beach. Yeah, thirty-five, but unbuildable parcel. So the next proper step for us would be to have that appraised. So at the next meeting, we'll have a resolution to, if you could get us, get an appraiser. The one that did the appraisals for us. In litigation.
And we have someone finding you to big recommends as well.
Oh, yeah, there are a number of them I've been using recently, so I'll, I'll see what Tony, Tony's. It's residential.
That's not a problem.
The next one, special events, usability prop, the applications, we are in receipt of a few of them. We are at our meeting for the Green Law Events. The PAC has communicated that they will not be having an event, uh, this year at the Great John. But we, uh, have a substitution partial application that, uh. We should take them into consideration as long as they understand that this, this year only. Because last year they were in violation of the PAC's, pardon the word. This year, you know, standing along with that. And I think the PAC was interested in probably the following year, having an event against.
You understand, you have to disagree.
But there are, there are, what, uh, I think you use historically, because the historical society historically has one event per year. Church, because of the church, they're covered by all the buildings. Chamber of Commerce has a couple of events. So they have locked in certain dates that they traditionally have their events. So we honor those traditions, I guess is the best way of putting it. And the PAC officially had an event, we would like to honor that tradition, even though we're not doing it this year. Coming up so quick, um, Chamber has the one for. But they also have the one that's attached to that. It's pretty, which is actually separate. Brian, he's the one that runs the run. We did the run last time. We did it before, I know you had it there. We wanted to talk about the run this year with the, um, with the Chamber. About moving, because his location was inside the, uh. Inside Douglas Park, which did not work out. It was okay, but it wasn't, that's not real. Talked about moving to his location for the run onto Bean Street. And the Chamber, nobody's here for the Chamber.
I shall represent me.
Then you represent everybody. One of the things that we had discussed, Steve and I had discussed about this was moving your portion of the thing. To on Main Street, your, on Main Street, right by the, uh, with the opening is that goes down to Ponchos. So, because your run goes out the back, out into Polato. So you could have your event up on Main Street. And then the guy, the runners go, when they meet after they get done, they would go out the back. And they're, then go into their regular run thing along Library Avenue. And the run area is already, you know, designated out. You know, that's, we use the same run route for everybody. So, um.
Breakdown then, would I be allowed to put up just multiple, say ten by forty tents? Rather than getting.
Well, the problem is that property, you have the village property, then you have the village property on the side in between is private property.
Right, I, oh, I just thought we were talking about in the street.
You're in the street, you should be able to do your, yeah, do your thing in the street where you have your, your, in conjunction with you at the Chamber. You know, how, how much space you wanted to, so I noticed last year we had a lot, the, we had a lot of space.
Yep.
That was available to it. And we could have, and as we were talking about last year, I think you even mentioned, it'd be nice if it was over here. That was my idea, unless you have another specific idea.
Normally we're. I think that's a, that's a great spot.
Or move it all the way down by the circle at that end, um, by Library.
I'm okay anywhere there, yeah, I mean, anywhere from, because normally we're always set up over by, uh, Douglas Elliman. So I just assumed there, but I can go right over where you mentioned.
I was thinking, because it makes it easier for your runners to go out the back.
It's nice and close.
It's nice and close. Is there, uh, Mr. Angel, is there any legal problem with us directing a throng of runners? Down a private alleyway? Sure. That's what I thought.
Well, I can walk.
Fleeting, they may not notice.
But yeah, that's, that was my only, the only issue, I was gonna bring that up next, because you beat me to it.
Right. Because we can't, I know we can't divert traffic through a private parking lot. We have those issues, so I would think.
Well, I can direct people to walk around.
If you go down at that end of the, end of the main street, within that, what you're running and everything is all. Because then we'd like to keep that concentrated, separate, you know, you're together, but you're separate.
Which was a problem last year, because I really wanted, uh, the runners to be involved more on Main Street, which I agree was. I appreciated setting up in the park, but, uh, it didn't allow for the mix. And I, I think we had such a great response that will at least double, if not more, the number of people. And I would, I also wanted to ask permission to do something. Since we, we're gonna do a fun run as well, which is for the little, little kids, it's just like fifty yards. If we could do that right on Main Street at ten thirty and then the, the race at eleven.
Main Street's already closed.
Already closed, I just didn't want everyone going, why are there thirty kids sprinting down the.
Well, that's the only, that's the question I have, then I'll slip your other hat over there, the, uh, Chamber hat.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be an issue with any of the vendors that are gonna be there?
Well, I, I think it'll bring, it'll definitely bring all the parents in to the vendors, so, and as I said, it would be a ten.
But I'm, I'm done thinking of safety wise.
Well, we won't begin, the, uh, the event begins at eleven, so I would do.
But you got guys coming in to set up, because they're supposed to be set up, they're supposed to come in at seven to set up.
They're supposed to be done setting up between ten and some thirty, and which is why I'm choosing ten thirty, yeah. So they're supposed to close it for the vendors.
If you can make a short, if, if, even if you got a bunch of guys, it would stand there and this whole tape.
And it's just because I like the visual, I could always do it on Library. I just like the idea.
I know, I like the idea that you start maybe at the circle and go west.
Yes.
On, you know, the, the, the Library Avenue circle and go west on, 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 on Main Street. How far are you gonna go, sextence?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like it's a long distance, but if you can, you know, even make a little, uh, you know, get the fireline tape or something like that, the yellow tape that, you know. Here's a trough that you guys all run down.
Yeah, that's it, that's exactly what we're hoping to do. So, all right, good, we're on the same.
And you just gotta make sure there's no, there's no food cart right in the middle of it.
We don't want a hot dog truck over there when the kids are there, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think it'll be a fun event, you know, a real nice family factor. That I didn't bring last year, we brought a lot of adults, but I think now we bring. And you're gonna go through the, um, um, liquor portion of the annuals like that.
You guys would have to pass that, um, in March.
Were you gonna do the, uh.
March meeting. Or the main street area.
Right. Who would know? Anyone who is applying for that, who needs to send it in for signature. And previously it was, uh, Mayor Moore, so who would be signing in this case?
Yeah, it'd be the same thing, same application, you know, same parameters and we're not gonna change the, you know. I don't know, because last year the parameters we did put in Glover's Park. Because you were up there.
But we had the zoo up there too, there was a petting zoo up there.
Yeah, so probably just leave that, leave it the same parameters as last year.
Okay.
It seemed to work last. It worked, it was never an issue. And you know the parameters of it, the, the clubs, the, you know, the, see, you know, who else is gonna be in there?
Okay.
Uh, you and Renetti and who else was, um. I think there was three. Yeah. His thing down, he brought his thing down into the bracket. Yeah, all those guys have to bring in, they have to come into the premise.
That's, that's a chamber, that's a chamber. Yeah, we have a meeting now, they'll be happy to hear, we have need to extend tonight's meeting.
So you figure out the layout with, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but with your, with your run portion of the thing.
All right.
And then just get that all in together and then put it all, you know, put it all together for the, because we had to do that in March. April meeting before the, when is the date again? At the end of April, so we do have the April meeting, guess there's any problems? Special events items. Now your Chamber hat, nothing else coming up, being, you know, before the regular season stuff and everything else like that.
The Chamber and, uh, it's spring.
It's the spring flings and spring wings. Something up, you just haven't forgotten. Do you have the sidewalk still coming up in April? Yes. Same Patty's Day parade, the application has been, um, the, the only reason the insurance isn't there. Agent decided to go to Florida, I see.
No carnival or anything, just parade.
There's no carnival, it's just a parade. The parameters, there's, I already said that with Steve and we went over, there's no change, on the, you know, everything is the same. People, there may be a few more objections, make sure it's all the application. No, Justin, Justin has done this and has submitted zero.
Yeah, no, Justin told everybody, oh, Brian's handling it, no, there's nothing in yet. All he needs, well, he needs something in writing, asking the board just to allow it, and then he has to get his temperament. He's gotta get temperament, he hasn't even.
My, my text message to Justin say another story, but, um.
He was there Friday and gave me a site and of what he wants to do and I said, Justin, the temperament, Brian's handling it. Now, I don't know if that was you, Brian, or, or, or Brian.
He's been talking to Brian Teeman at the same time.
Fully handling it, but maybe it was you? Okay, so.
And he has to get his waiver.
Oh, exemption on the St. Patty's Day, really? No, we're open. Anything else?
No, just the little league.
Little league, right. I don't know if you have, the day's.
Yeah.
Do you have any changes this year?
No.
No, no, they're, they're.
Go anywhere that we want.
He knows about that, that. And anybody in Smith's end, they'll, we'll be in the summer, the construction is to be going. Right, um, we do have a meeting scheduled with her, potential contractor.
Okay.
Should be moving forward now with the, uh, bidding process. We had a holdup because of the town, over attorneys found the glitch, we had to work through the glitch, so. Now we're moving forward again.
Yeah, he said what he was in last week, that meeting you guys had last week.
Yes.
Said he'd be dropping all the bid stuff to me, so I'm waiting on. Said he'd be dropping all the bid stuff to me, so I'm waiting on it.
And we were, they're now allowed to put out the electrical portion of bid.
Can rebid the electrical.
Insult, approve the specs.
Yes, we're meeting with Mr. Ted Zelinka. And we're gonna have a meeting with the potential contractor and Benny Agadiello. And Mr. Fano and I will meet with all those entities and hopefully move forward with the bidding process. Now that we've ironed out, we will be jointly owning the windmill. With an undivided interest and their, their, their public hearing is February twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already passed a resolution, but they have yet. Twenty seven.
The town has.
They have a public hearing.
So that's on February twenty seventh, public hearing and then we'll be cleared to go.
Anyone else? You need to see my special events.
At the map or the rock.
Want to make sure that one's.
List, you got the map for work? Same route.
I'm sure we have it.
It took us a long time to find it. Trevor and I came up with that, that. We went around and we, we actually got out the measure. We have to get the, was it needing the. Five K needed the certification. For, we went out to figure it, it took us about six times to finally figure out exactly where the start point is, where the end point was.
Yes, we have the map.
Okay. Go right here first. One left.
Anything else, anyone else? Special event?
Special question, really?
No, not this one, no.
I'm not this one, but it's called, it's been by February first, you just have to keep it.
We don't have a board.
We have a forum. If it wasn't going to be on the agenda, I should have been informed. I literally drove home for this.
What if?
It what?
It was never, it was never.
I was told if it was in by February first, it was going to be discussed tonight. That is exactly what the letter says, that it went out with the application. If that was going to be different, I should have been informed.
Okay, what would you like to discuss?
What its status is and how you guys are gonna approach it, because you have a forum, you have three out of five boardrooms.
Okay. We can't vote on it anyway.
We, we can't, this is, this is a work session.
I know, I'm well aware of that. It doesn't get done necessarily until approved and submitted for next time, but it's usually discussed and decided, and then the approval is forthcoming next time. If it's not discussed, the approval's not gonna come through next. I literally drove home yesterday for this meeting. No one at any point said that that was not taking place to me.
Well, the, are you speaking about your particular outdoor dining application?
Yeah. Why, I put it in by February first, so that it could be on.
You have your health department approval for that?
I don't have any health department approval, you've never required, it's in front of the code. You're telling me that everyone needs health department approval now for outdoor dining?
Under your application that was submitted, you are required by the Southern County Health Department to have a tool for any outdoor dining from the health department.
Where is that in the application? It's never been since nineteen ninety seven when this was put in. It's not part of the code, it's not part of the application.
Well, it's, it's more to follow, we do not have the authority to prevent Southern County Health Department.
So you can start preventing it since nineteen ninety seven and you're changing the code now?
Of course, we never had this requirement before. Which says no outdoor seating permitted unless an application is submitted to be approved by Southern County Health Department Services in accordance with the standards effective time of application.
That's anybody's indoor seating.
No, it's outdoor seating.
That is anybody's application, the health department does not involve outdoor seating. So you're telling me that nobody has that approval, there's no more outdoor dining, except for those that have it on their site, because those are the only ones that have health department approval. That would be Marjorie DeGrau, Most Stop, Ice, maybe Moon. You're telling me that every other one has it, because nobody else has it, by the way. Flora, uh, Flora, I think it's also on their site. Correct. Thank you.
Right. Who is specific to this, to that application posted on there?
It's come to light.
On there, survey for that particular piece of property.
The health. This is not our, see, this is not our thing. This is Southern County Health Department's doing here, not us. You have to understand that this. Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's evolving because of.
Because of the issues with the.
Right.
A lot, yeah.
Right, I think a lot of changes have occurred because pre-COVID, there were certain situations. And then COVID, some of the situations loosened up a great deal. And now we're adjusting to post-COVID, and some of these things are catching up with us now. Yeah, so that's. I think the board's basic approach is if you have health department approval, or whatever, in any fashion or form. That the board is highly open to continuing your open, your outdoor seating as it was previously. There are some, some areas that have gone through a change in which the health department changed their stipulations on that particular location. We do not have the power to overstep the health department. We, if, if health department approval is amended or changed, we are open to that amendment.
Some of you are going to require health department approval for anybody applying for outdoor seats. I am in a completed agreement, I'm sorry, I don't know your person, Ashley, sweet Ashley. None of us have ever had health department approval for outside use. I understand you're looking at mine specific, but now denotes it, but nobody's will specifically denote that they are allowed.
And it doesn't deny them either, but this one does.
This one does, says no.
See, that totally does deny, because it only allows for indoor seating, not any.
So, and is, if the health department, I think, health department is paying more and more attention to this.
And we have always risked and accepted, and none of us, I would assume, you are in the same boat, have ever been written up for the health department. I've had outdoor seating since nineteen, since two thousand twenty. And I have never been written up for overseeding. They have come every year for an inspection on outdoor seats and they've never said, hey, you're not allowed to have those seats, because they have.
Your particular state, they said, no.
We can't.
We can override that.
But, and if they do the same thing. If they do the same thing to other entities in the board, yes.
We're only talking about your specific site.
You're not making a statement that we're not making policy now, or what do we need to discuss something? And I don't like, this meeting is for you to talk about things to the public. Cross-examination of this particular meeting is sort of inappropriate. You can keep your position.
It's not cross-examination, I'm asking questions. It's not for the application process.
Well, there's no answer. The answer to your question, the answer to your question is that. I believe, I haven't seen the term, just talking about, I'm just, but there's apparently some sort of prohibition on outdoor seating in connection with your recent health department permits, if I'm correct. So what we're saying, what the board's saying to you is that they can't get around now. They're not discussing, and I don't think we should discuss everybody else's until we look at all these other things. We don't know what they even say in this board. And so, to say where the policy would be at this point, we gotta look at it. Well, you know, if there's a, if there's a health department approval that says absolutely not, we can't, we can't really go around and say. Because the health department ain't gonna be happy with that and we'll get a violation.
But, I'm saying. Sure. What is going around is outdoor seating that they put in by the board, not outdoor.
What's your new problem with that?
There is not an establishment that applies to you that shows you that they have approval for outdoor seats, because it's not something the health department does. So no one else has come to you and said, they have come to you, I have their COs, I have health department permits, and they have sixteen seats inside, or they have forty seats inside. It does not necessarily stipulate and say there's no outdoor, but there is no outdoor approved. You can tell by looking at someone's permit. There is no outdoor. So unless you're telling me that other businesses are going to come forward with outdoor permits that are permitted by the health department, and that's how you're going to allow it, then you can't allow anyone outdoor seating.
That may be the case, we'll have to look into it.
That may be the case, it may not be the case.
But we have to look into it.
There's no answer at this point.
Um, because this is different.
It's not different.
It is, well, it is different.
You have to tell me someone's application that actually, that, that health department permit that actually says they are allowed outdoor seating, and I won't argue with you.
The health department is changing the way they're.
I guess the question. Lady is.
This lady has a name.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Erin.
Oh, Erin. But, I mean. Somebody should show us the permits. Is there a prohibition on outdoor seating similar to the prohibition here on the other permits in the village? I don't know the answer.
My health department permit that you, that I would submit to you doesn't show you that at all.
Excuse me?
The health department that hangs in my wall that says the sixteen seat.
I thought that there's a. Well, this.
It is.
Be on anybody else's side.
Well, this is their stamp that came on their.
Yes, stipulation one, but it's not gonna be on, it's gonna say what everyone else says, sixteen seat lunch.
We'll have to reach out to the health.
And get back, because for every single person. Everything that you did for Main Street, all those improvements to enhance Main Street, you're gonna let one person take away from this village? Because if you think that I'm going to drop it based on just mine, you won't.
No.
It's, it's not a matter of that. You're the board of trustees and the mayor, and you're sitting here looking at all this work you just put into this village, and one of the hugest enhancements of this village was outdoor dining. We all take our chances. We have all understood that, Brad, you know you've understood it since day one, since this code has been in, that it is technically not the legal code. That you technically don't supersede the health department. You have licensed on a seasonal basis for all businesses applying, whether it's on village property or private property, outdoor seating outside of the parameters of the health department. And now you are choosing on a single applicant to deny it. You have always licensed it, we have always taken our chances. One hundred percent could the health department come in and give me a smack on the hand, or write me up for overseeding or having outdoor seating. As they could to Flora, as they could to Salt and Loft, as they could to the bakery, would you want me to continue, Ivy, um, who else, Goldbergs? And we all take that chance, and we would all pay a fine if that is the necessity, because it is an enhancement to all of our businesses and to this village, and it's been going on since nineteen ninety seven. There is nothing in your code, nothing, that requires health department approval. Not a single stipulation in one ninety six or one ninety seven. It does not talk about health department approval at all, it's not a requirement. You didn't change the code, the code still exists the way it is, and it does not require health department approval. It's a seasonal permit that's licensed from this village. I'm not gonna tell you it's right or it's wrong, but it's existed forever, and we've all taken our chances. You've never been written up, I've never been written up. And you're gonna take that away from every single business. We put indemnification clause on, I assumed that was exactly what that was covering this year. I assumed that because all of this had been brought to light, that's why that clause came in. Planning Board's approval specifically says they're not approving or disapproving of my outdoor dining. They specifically put in a footnote in that to cover their bases. The indemnification clause should cover this board's base and the municipality's base. It's always been done, it does not require, and it's in your village code. And there is nothing in it that requires health department.
We will look into it with the health department, and our intent is not to stop all outdoor dining.
No one has approval for outdoor dining from the health department.
Well, that's not our.
With the exception of three places.
And because it is a very well-liked, popular.
That you as a board are about to take away from this village.
To check with the health department and see.
You have a perfect way of continuing it, and you have an indemnification. And you put in an indemnification, indemnification.
Indemnification is for dining in the village own rights, which is a code we did change, and that doesn't help. Your particular property doesn't, doesn't fall into that category, because you don't use the village own right away for your outdoor seating. I just wanna make that clear. So we did actually amend the code for those properties that are using the village own rights, like the sidewalk, and that they do have to get SLA approval from the health department. Again, it doesn't, it doesn't.
It's a whole another subject that no one has.
That's what an indemnification is for. It's not for, if you have it holding on in your property. So you might have seen it in the package, but you wouldn't have needed it.
I'm still excited to go that, for assumed applies to me.
I'm gonna move on.
And thanks so much for the courtesy of saying that wasn't on the agenda. When you literally sent out a letter that said February first and you'll be on other meetings on February twenty first. It's an overthink that I literally drove home for.
Do you have access to our website?
I do.
We haven't seen you, weren't on the agenda.
It said special exceptions, I assumed I was part of that. It didn't list anything past that.
No, special events, no special exceptions on that.
When I get a letter that says what you submit by February first, that you're on from the twenty first, I take it at face value. I didn't think I had to double check.
It's changed.
We're gonna move on. The next one is employee training, and that's to deal with the, the P W employees. That are going to. Resolution on that.
In the future.
In the future, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, we just get it approved first and then move on. Appreciate Frank.
Mr. Good. Yeah, he goes, no, it's not my part, he goes, yeah.
Alright, so we'll have a resolution on the next. And that improves the agenda. Has anyone? We all, we probably have anything to say here. Well, I suggested to you in our next email that we best to do it, we have a full board here. This, even if we discuss it now, no decision, just as happened just now, no decisions are being made, there is no resolution to be, is just simply a discussion. I, I think our emails have been pretty clear between us. And the best opportunity, as I said in my email to you. Next full board work session is the best opportunity for you to have that discussed and come up with a solution of some sort for a resolution at the following meeting. It is just an open question at this point, Vince.
So the next meeting is March seventh.
The third Wednesday is the work session, it wouldn't be the seventh. Work session, twentieth, March twentieth, I believe. March twentieth is the work session, and then the following meeting in April, which is the first Thursday in April, whatever that is. That's when the resolution would be read if we agree at the March twentieth meeting. So, yes. if we agree at the March twentieth meeting, so yes.
We're gonna work it on the four weeks, at least, to make the plan.
Yes. But that's the way, unfortunately, that's the way government works, because you get approvals for things first. Just as we're talking about the fire department sign. The first thing on the agenda, as a matter of fact, that fire department sign has been under discussion for two years now. And we haven't turned to a consensus yet, but we're working on it. So sometimes it takes a great deal of patience to work with government, because it's, uh, if I say something is okay, it doesn't mean it's necessarily okay with the other board members. And it takes a consensus and if I, if the community is giving input and Rob interprets it one way and I interpret it another way, we, the board members accept. Listen, come up with what they think is a fair, reasonable resolution to whatever it is. And we vote on it and that's what the resolution is. It is a painful process sometimes, admittedly, to get five people to agree on what's best for the community. And that's just the way it works. Okay?
And it's a thank you, Rob, congrats on what you're doing. Thank you.
Once in a while. Vince, just, Vinnie, Vince?
Well, maybe I should ask you, remember when we first started this, you gave me a wage?
Good hunting to that.
Okay, we need, yeah, okay. We, we need that as well. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Do we, uh? But never be there. It's good, we have to go into executive session, so, uh.
Yes. Just, it should be a brief one, but we have the last executive.
So, do you turn into an executive second? The resolution would go in the executive section?
Make a motion to go to the executive. So it's a cussing personal.
Bob, do you have seconds?
All favor?
I have.
Okay.